The May 7th, regular planning board meetings called to order 6:30, 2 P M. This to advise that the notice of the time, date, location, the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in the public place reserve as such for similar announcements on April 22nd, 2025 and transmitted to the times, the Princeton packet and the West Windsor Plainsboro News on April 22nd, 2025 and filed with the township clerk on April 22nd, 2025. Tricia, please call the roll.
Yes.
Is this the hour?
Yes.
Back spot?
Here.
You can't go.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Is that again? Um, then we have to get them. May I run a chat?
Yes.
Wait, can I move it?
Here.
Here. Thank you. I don't have any announcements, so right now I'll open it up to the public for non-agenda, non-pending items. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Felicia Spitz. Um, I don't live in West Windsor. I just, I, I want to make that point first.
What town do you live in?
I live in Princeton.
Okay.
Um, I graduated high school in West Windsor in 1987 and I came here on Saturday morning to pick up a wheelchair from a friend of mine whose last parent had died to bring it to someone in town who needed it. And I got home Saturday morning and I said to my husband, I was really sad driving up Princeton Heights Town Road and seeing what has happened to the place I considered my first home in New Jersey with the warehouses. Um, I'm struck by the word tranquility um, on your, your seal. And I'm not sure what part of ginormous warehouses that are wrecking the environment and causing traffic and pollution and literally driving through the heart of what used to be my home is in keeping with that word. And I want to implore you all to pause here um, and rethink this because it's not just something that impacts my old home here in West Windsor. It's something that impacts the towns that surround you too. So your work here tonight is not just about the residents of West Windsor and how they'll be impacted, but we're all part of this community. Um, and I just want to leave with, there's an old Turkish proverb that says, no matter how far you've gone down the wrong road, you can always turn back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Theresa Warman. I live at Five Stone Lee Drive, West Windsor. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Um, we're coming up to almost the third year anniversary of planning board's approval of Bridgepoint West Windsor LLC, and I really can't express it any better than Felicia just did. Um, you're all smart people. We had a vigorous debate at the time. Um, there's new information which I shared with Sam just a month ago. Um, there was pending litigation from the watershed uh, uh, institute um, against this site and court that is now in the hands of D E P. Um, there is evidence, photographic evidence which they share showing that the builder apparently disturbed the site, uh, removed from the site. And um, it's, these are aerial photos. Um, Sam said he would share it with all of you. Um, I know you're great, but you know, Sam is busy. If you haven't seen it, I'm happy to make it available. Um, it's, it is now as I said, the hands of D E P. And I think, given the fact that there are no other approvals except for the Westminster Planning Board, uh, I, I raise this because I think it is still timely for the planning board to revisit what is happening at the site. So recall that your approval was under 1999 flood maps. There are now flood map 2023 and they should apply to this site because they reflect the real-time flooding, which everyone knows happens and is at greater risk of happening today. And recall that I can still see the, the list of permitted use of personal developments that were not warehouses.
That's essentially that we're talking about with that one of the venues.
And you know. With space as Princeton did just within the last. Like a mile or two away. In the frame of this application. Um, I would also urge you to think about when I understand. Of in the Mets, um, but it's just, and to think about. There is, it's been number some D E P for uh, the tree clearing that appears for, where there were end for the movement. Uh, dash, okay, four dash two, four dash twelve hundred. The site is not paying any taxes. There are no taxes. For us that um, one of the residents did just a few. Time is now for us to bring. Isn't appropriate. We are protective of the land. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Andrea Mandel, 46 Ellsworth Drive, West Windsor, New Jersey. I'm also the president of the West Windsor Township Council. Uh, and I'm speaking um, as, as president of the council right now. Um, I just wanted to let the uh, planning board know that there has been a complete streets uh, resolution that was passed. I think it's a 2010, if I get it correctly, which we have been um, under uh, since then, referring to a complete streets policy and that we had a meeting, uh, our last meeting on Monday, we discussed a new complete and green streets policy that we've been working on with administration. Uh, that policy will be further discussed at um, the Environmental Commission meeting on Thursday night. And then we expect um, any, with any modifications, that it'll be a resolution that will be voted on probably in the next May meeting of with Township Council. This isn't something that is reviewed by planning board. It's not an ordinance. It's a resolution. But I do want to make the planning board aware that we are looking at a new improved, which is now going to be not only a complete streets, but a complete and green streets policy. And that will, once, once that is passed, that will be coming to the uh, planning board as um, as something that they will be using as when looking at applications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm Warren Metlack, live at Five Stone Lee Drive, West Windsor. I just want to amplify something. Uh, Theresa had just said, in case it didn't hit home with you, the, the thing about the 181 housing units. So if the idea with the warehouses was that we're saving, you know, so many housing units to come there, I just want to take you through that. The D C A, when they looked at our um, plan for the year to calculate how many affordable housing units we needed to provide in town, the number that they came up with was 661. The town went and hired Burgess Associates and realized that part of um, how they calculated the number was they looked at the warehouse uh, land and considered it developable land. And that's how they came up with the 661. So Burgess Associates, you know, corrected that, pointed out that that was a not, no longer developable land because of the warehouses. And after, you know, going back and forth on some other properties in town, came up with a number of 480. So if you look at the difference between 480 and 661, that is the number, the way I look at it anyways, that um, that is uh, we saved by taking that land off of the developable land um, um, books. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Ajay Kais, 20 Haskell Drive, Princeton Junction. Um, I'd just like to make comments on two separate issues tonight. Um, the State Assembly, I believe, uh, is passing or is passed in pro, some process of reviewing A D U's accessory dwelling units. Um, and maybe that issue will come to you folks at some point in the future. Um, I hope you consider that favorably because there is a need for such type of um, accommodation in Westminster. Uh, maybe uh, in the large lots that some single family homes have, they can accommodate in-laws or rent them out to more affordably to people who need affordable housing. So uh, I'd like you to keep that in mind as you proceed in your planning. Um, secondly, I see the word tranquility. I see the word research and I see the word knowledge. And I'd like you to, like to, like to let you know that this planning board that approved the warehouses, uh, none of those three elements will be met by this imposition of this monstrosity that's coming down our tracks. Um, I'd like to single out uh, Alan Schecktow, who was the only one who actually uh, presented some facts on that fateful night where most of you voted for the warehouses other than Alan Schecktow and one of the planning board member.
Simon too.
And yeah, thank you. Simon Danko, I, I just didn't remember. So thank you for that. But he was the only one who actually made a presentation that night. Uh, and I hope you heard it very carefully because everything there was accurate. And um, and I'm not sure why uh, you voted yes at that time, but you've had, so in my mind, that's a big fail, fail for the community, fail for the residents who live near especially, but also for the larger neighborhood. So that's a big F. The second F is uh, the issue of the um, new uh, flood maps that this planning board has done absolutely nothing to um, make sure that the developer complies with them uh, and just has a quest to 22 year, 20 plus year old flood maps and climate change is real regardless of what our president might believe. Uh, and it's something that will impact us and we have to be cognizant of that. And so this planning committee and Westminster Council should be doing everything in its power actually to be having, to make the developer update their conditions to meet the new flood maps. So I implore you to take a look at that. Um, and then lastly, this whole thing about the developer starting work on the site uh, without meeting the approvals seems to violate the conditions that the planning board approved. So if the watershed report is accurate and you see the exhibits that have been provided by Theresa, then this planning board should take action to prevent that. And uh, I would suggest that, uh, use that as one of the mechanisms to try and put a stop to this warehouse. Uh, although, because you know, there are some members of council who seem to portray one side that, you know, other people are doing all of this stuff. So we don't really need to do anything as a community ourselves to stop it. And I think that's just double speak because I'm not clear whether that means the council and the planning board are for the completion of the warehouses or actually are wanting to delay it or stop it. So if you really want to take a proactive stance against this uh, 5.5 million square foot monstrosity that's coming to welcome residents on one end of our town, it's time that you actually did something to prevent it. Thank you.
Good evening. Ben Finkelstein, 43 Arnold Drive. Uh, I mean, Ajay said it nicely. It's 5.5 million square feet. It'd be the largest warehouse project in the state of New Jersey, one of the largest in the country. It will put us on a map. Uh, I do think it's terrible for the environment and public health, but you all know that and I'm not here to rehash the same argument. Right? You, you guys want this. We voted, you voted for it. It is what it is at this stage, but I am going to ask what you guys intend to do with this information that apparently there's photographic evidence of vegetation cutting and tree cutting before the permits were granted. Uh, that's, seems to me a breaking of the law on behalf of the developer. I don't know if, if that was, if there was a backroom deal or how exactly that happened. If we're allowing developers to build without proper permits now, is that the new protocol? Or are we going to investigate this pretty clear evidence? Or are we just going to pretend it didn't happen? It seems like this is also a pattern. The warehouse, the 400,000 foot warehouse on 571. Seems like there was vegetation cutting and tree cutting throughout the spring and uh, summer and part of the fall last year. And then there were a few months where there was no action whatsoever, no development on the land. I'm wondering if something similar happened. There was some sort of, hey, yeah, it's okay. If you do it, we're gonna, we expect the permits to come. You can start clearing the land. I don't know if you guys noticed, you guys certainly noticed the development along 571. Were the, was there vegetation and land clearing and were there actions taken by the developer without the permits in that case? Because it appears that if it happened with the warehouse on 571 and then again with the 650 acre property along Clarksville and Quaker Bridge, then if it happened twice, that would be a pattern. And I would just encourage this body to investigate, especially now that there's pretty clear evidence that this has happened at least once. And from the naked eye, the untrained naked eye, twice. Thank you for your time.
Hi, uh, Mike Deverell, 91 Pennile Isle Road. Um, a lot has been said that I completely agree with. Not going to rehash that. Uh, there is one thing that I think is sort of at the heart of my, what makes me uncomfortable about this entire thing, which is the sort of trust that we've had in this developer to do the right thing for our community and the sort of deference that we've had towards them and that this will be a good thing for our community. And so we should just let them do what they want to do. We want like, oh, they want to build more, um, well, they want to build seven warehouses with 5.5 million square feet. Sure. Sounds good. Uh, we, they want to have 900 uh, truck bays instead of the 100 some odd that, that would normally be zoned for there. Sure. Okay. Um, and I just want to make sure that you guys are taking a good look at this uh, purported evidence of uh, you know, working before the permits uh, were approved to, to take another look at your trust in the developer and to maybe if this does come back for reapproval based on new flood maps or for whatever other reason, um, don't sort of go in with the default with the default view that whatever you say they're going to follow uh, to the, to the spirit of what you say, rather than maybe just to the letter of what you say, if they even follow it to the letter of what you say. Um, so that's basically it. Just, I'm asking as a resident, don't trust these guys as much as you have.
My name is Karambait, uh, 286 Clarkson Road, Princeton Junction. So uh, a lot has been said. A lot has been said, um, from the previous applicant. So I just want to know, like, uh, the uh, tax has not been received. It's not been getting received from the Bridge Point Eight. So I want to, I'm very curious about it, like why the tax has not been getting received from the Bridge Point Eight. Because on the other side, like uh, my tax poverty is getting increased every year. Like uh, I mean, almost every year I'm getting a paper from, letter from the mayor that uh, your tax have been increased up to this, that much or that much of percentage. But on the other side, the Bridge Point Eight, uh, it's not been good, did not pay the single tax since uh, 2019. So which I'm very much, very much curious to know, like why uh, like the Bridge Point Eight is getting so much privilege and not the resident who are the regular taxpayer of the, of, to the township. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I don't know what prompted all these comments today. There's nothing, there's nothing in front of the planning board, but I'm always amazed when same people make same untruthful statements, especially when the statements can be proven untrue in couple of minutes, literally. I don't know why people do that. And first to the lady from Princeton, I don't know which warehouse you saw. There's not a single warehouse being built between here and Princeton, either going west or going south. You have, you have done, you have, it's my time to talk. I listen to all of you very patiently, saying untruths and making things up. Now it's my time to talk. So if you want to do, just drive two miles down the line, cross our border, you will see four, five warehouses being built, ready to go. I hope you go to that town and make the same comments because that's exactly less than two miles from where here is, your high school.
Yeah.
Ma'am, I am comment. I. I am. I am entitled to comments. As you were entitled to comments, I did not interrupt you. So I hope you will give me the same courtesy and not interrupt me. It's rude to interrupt me when I am responding to your comment. You came from Princeton to make comments. I have to set the record straight. Second thing, people are saying taxes are not paid. I have no clue why they can make that statement and how they can make that statement. And I'll, I'll just give a tax lesson for everybody little later. But um, I checked with the tax assessor, that property is not owned by Bridge Point Eight. That property is owned by Atlantic Realty. So the taxes are paid by Atlantic Realty. And in 2024, Atlantic Realty paid 3,557,355 dollars in taxes. And in 2020, that was almost 1.4 million more than in 2023. And they paid more because we challenge their assessments on the apartments. They own the apartments across the street too, Princeton Terrace. So all taxes have been paid on every property and um, I have no clue why people are claiming. Regarding the J D N property, the J D N property paid a taxes of $532 in 2023 because it was considered a farmland. In 2024, they paid a taxes of 537,141 dollars. That's almost thousand times more. Not only that, but they paid a rollback taxes of 1,561,540 dollars. And that's why your municipal taxes have not increased in seven years. In addition to that, they also paid 1,027,555,48 cents in affordable housing fee. We have already collected 50% of that, 513,777,74 cents, August 15th of last year. And we will complete the rest of the fee when they complete in October or November. Their estimated tax bill will be 1.3 million dollars when they finish in, in roughly October or November of 2023. So I have no clue why people claim that taxes are not paid or um, where they get that information and they confidently make absolutely false information. And these are the taxes that help us um, to help with the affordable housing. Because the affordable housing fee was paid, that fund is used to help people living in affordable housing by giving them either paying for their H V A C or other improvements, or we also give credit to, even affordable housing has three categories, low, moderate, and very low. We do give credit to very low people living in very low housing. We give them rental credit. So these fees are used to help people living in affordable housing. The second question about the trees being taken down is that the, the uh, planning board approval said that they cannot pull a permit until the linked route one is made. And they have kept that permit. What they had done was done, whatever was done on that property was done even before they came to the planning board for approval. Any person in this township can get a demolition permit and demolish whatever structure they have on the property. So if you want to build your, take down your house and build bigger house, which is happening in, in West Windsor, you can take a demolition permit, pay the fees and you can find out they paid every fees uh, to demolish the properties and that was done even before. Since the planning board approval has been done, they have not pulled a single permit. They have kept with every condition of the planning board approval. So again, I have no clue why people are saying they are doing this. They're, that's absolutely absolute falsehood. The last thing, little bit about taxes. Um, most of you know that the township collects 100% of the taxes for the school district and for the county. The dirty little secret that most people don't know is we are obligated to pay those taxes to school district and county. So for example, if you don't pay your taxes on your home, the school district doesn't care, the county doesn't care, we care because we are obligated to pay on your behalf to school district. School district simply sends us a monthly bill and whether people have paid their taxes or not, we are obligated to pay that monthly bill to the school district and to the county. So out of the 15% that the township collects, we are responsible for remaining 85%. So we are very vigilant to make sure every person pays taxes. Our collection rate as it is without any effort is over 99% because of the demographics and I'm thankful for that. But unfortunately, if anyone doesn't pay taxes, or if in this case Atlantic Realty doesn't pay taxes, we just auction of the taxes. So every quarter or once a year, we auction of the taxes. So if any of you think they have not paid taxes, go to auction, buy that property pennies on a dollar and then you can put park, you can put open space, you can put whatever you want there, right? So if they have not paid taxes, you have every right to buy that property. So I, I'm, I'm surprised that people are spreading false information. They are not paying taxes as I gave you numbers and I have printed sheet. You can take that from me if you want. They have all paid taxes and we are very vigilant to make sure everybody pays taxes. Otherwise I have to pay outside township pocket to county and, and state their share of taxes. So I think those were the questions asked. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Um, yeah, just one. I, I just want to add that this property is still in litigation and it's, it's being litigated in court. So there's unlimited things we can say about what's going on. You, would you like to come up and say?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. Um, just a point of information. And again, we've all known each other for years. Okay. So we're having a conversation. The person who did the Oprah search, and I can provide the documents, was on the lot and block number for this site. And it shows, I understand Atlantic Realty owns other property, including the Avalon Bay site. So I'm just talking about this site. The documents that were provided within maybe six weeks ago or so show $0 being paid on this site because the land is vacant. And it actually says land vacant, $0. So I'm not talking about the taxes that may have been paid on, on other properties. That's all. Okay. So I appreciate your listening to us and we are, we are serious in our. And we are, we are serious in our, in our request that at the very least, you look at the two thousand twenty-three flood maps. Because nothing has been built on the site yet. I am aware of the litigation. The litigation though brought by the watershed institute, the township is not a party to. So again, thank you so much for your consideration and I will, I will show, I will send you the documents that were provided by the township with regard to the tax liability. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you should, you, you come and call friends, you should check three times before you knowingly post false information on social media and knowingly get people excited by saying things that are absolutely untrue. They are absolutely untrue. There's no other way of saying it. Okay. And then the other thing that both you and your husband came and said, you have no idea what our affordable housing number is. The number that D C A gave us was six sixty-one. You don't know what our number is. We haven't disclosed our number. We haven't gone to the court with our number. When, sir, you don't know what the process is. When we disclose our number, you will know what our number, how much our number is reduced because of this property was taken out of circulation. And let's say the argument say it's two hundred houses reduced. You have to multiply it by four times. Because that's eight hundred, two hundred corresponds to eight hundred houses. So eight hundred houses reduced. And when you get your tax bill, you will see that school taxes are going up five point three percent. County taxes are going to go up similarly. People complain about taxes going up. That's not our taxes. The school taxes go up because of all the kids that are contributed by affordable housing and other housing coming in town. And that's what I'm trying to mitigate and avoid. So it's affordable for people to live in West Windsor. That's real affordable housing policy. Do not drive people out because your taxes are out of control.
I'm just gonna say a couple of things and then we move on. Number one, vacant land still gets taxed. Okay? Vacant land gets taxed. You have, you, you take a house. Maybe you have, the house is considered improvements and so the taxes are higher. You remove that house. You now have a vacant lot, you still pay taxes on it, right? The land, you still pay taxes on it. So I don't know why you think that just because it said vacant, there's no taxes being paid. This is number one. The, the second thing I want to address is that the indication that possibly quote unquote backroom deals, there's no backroom deals. Okay? So let's get that out of, out of an act. There's, there's no backroom deals. And that's the end of public comments. Let's move on. Next up is minutes from October sixteen. Anybody have any changes, amendments to the minutes from October sixteen? Anybody?
Motion to approve the minutes of October sixteen.
Okay, motion by Curtis, second by Alan, all, all data tells the votes, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, minutes from April second, any notifications, changes, amendments? Oh, God. Um, previous one to the sixteen. Okay. Yeah, I know. Okay, any, um. Be, before we go, Trish, just, um, Gary's, uh, Gary's law firm, the name is changed to Mueller and Bailey.
Right.
B A I L L I E.
Yep.
B A I L L I U. Martin. You know, it's, it's, it's a new part.
Okay, so it's mother.
Bailey.
Bailey. Okay.
And that's Shripa on both April second and October sixteen. Um, can I have can most of the improvements from April second? Move by Alan, taken by honest, who on faith is, that tells the vote, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Do you have a task we can move now? Okay. Um. Hey, uh, just before we start with the ordinances, hey, they, um, I know I don't like to, I'm trying to avoid like typos or whatever.
Oh, no.
But, um, just really quick, just when you go over your, the corrections, like the numbering and the subsections like A, B, C. Like for instance, and just really quick, two thousand twenty-five dash oh three ordinance.
Just give some examples.
Just an example and then you can check the rest. Also, there's no page numbers.
Right.
Put page number one there. Mm-hmm. So it's, it's gonna be number number six. Right? And then you, number seven is crossed out. Mm-hmm. You got that so far?
Yes. Wait, no, I don't. Um.
And then if you go to the next page, you're starting on subsection C. There's no A or B.
Wait, I'm sorry. Let me turn this mic.
Okay.
We're talking about.
Or, or minutes to, to two thousand twenty-five dash oh three.
Yes.
Um, number six, a traffic sign is planned to conform to requirements of two hundred nine, nine, one U for part three. You see that number six, bracketed six?
All I'm getting.
Three pages from the end. Okay. Yeah, if you go to, I have.
I found it.
That's, yeah, really, number six.
Uh, bracket number six, yes.
Okay, if you go to number six, oh, the one, the version I have. Uh, A, B, C, D, E, and F are crossed out and it goes on to the next page. I have a different copy. Maybe my copy is wrong. I apologize.
Oh, you have same one. I have the same one.
Oh.
I have the same one.
Okay, which one is the correct version? I have a lot of red.
I have a red too.
How many pages is this? I don't, there's no page number. I don't know.
Give me one second, guys. Let me check the, uh, what I sent over.
I'm already taking too much time off.
No. So my, I guess my, mine is different than that. I've got, I've got.
Yeah, same one I have. Yeah, I'm saying that when you go to the next page, B are gone and it starts C.
Good point. Uh, good point. Good point. Is that gonna pick the? No, it's your call.
Our reviews.
No, our, our reviews of this is, that's gonna affect.
Yeah, I don't, no, I'm just trying to make.
Yeah.
Just, we should be sexy at all.
Just check your letters, numbers, and then I'm done.
So it's a, it's a sequencing, you know, an outline sequencing that needs to get cleaned up.
Listen this.
Dave. Yeah, I would concern me. It's the outline sequencing, you know.
Yeah, Sam, let's.
All that stuff.
Sam, let's go with his word again.
All of the ordinances that were under consideration. No, I get that. I just wanted to check because the one I had sent had page numbers. That's why I was a little concerned.
I don't know. Format again. Under number six, number seven is crossed out and A B through N it's crossed out. Then the wrong one?
Yeah, that's the wrong one.
No, no, you have yours on that side.
I'm gonna get the one that was in my packet.
I printed mine out at home.
Oh.
You're gonna have mine.
No, I don't, I don't need it. I just want to make sure that it's the correct sequencing. So the outline.
Physical confidence. You have all the physical confidence.
I get it. I get it. I understand.
Let me see if it's correct.
The ordinance is that, the, the ordinance is that was sent to everyone or what I receive from the clerk's office. I get the ordinance from Dave, then it gets sent up to the clerk's office. So whatever changes are made were made in the clerk's office. So if Dave sent it up with numbers and I got it back from the clerk without the numbers, it's something from the clerk's office that eliminated the numbers.
Dan, this, this is the one you gave, you gave me. Uh, I mean, this is the one in the packet. I didn't print it. I just got it from the packet and this is the correct one. This is the correct one.
Okay, I think what happens.
Oh, no, 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 that's it.
Okay, no, no, I see what's happening. That's, that's not a typo. So.
Yeah.
Let's.
Yeah. I don't have, I don't have these across out, but same with on the next page, there's no A, B's, and C's across.
So no, that's not a typo. So I'm sorry. And I, I apologize for the page numbers. I sent them the page numbers they got. If you go back a couple of pages, consider we start at section five. Uh, which talks about chapter two hundred, but blah, final site plan details, item one is meant as follows. Let me know when you're there.
Sam, you're gonna resolve it right now.
No.
We'll hear it.
Because what happened, it's a little bit tough to tell with the, uh.
Like.
That is still.
The next, uh, I've got, okay, and then see, okay.
So you'll see if you start off. What was it? Uh, with section five, it goes from item one. Then underneath that, it goes to the sub-site of A, or sub-letter A, B, and then it goes to, in the brackets, one, two, three, four, five, six. And then it goes back to C. So it's going back to the parent list. So that's another bracket.
Okay.
Can you see what's going on?
Yeah. It's correct. It's correct.
Oh, I understand. It's correct. It's correct. It's just a little, um, confusion.
Sorry, it was a fuss.
No, no, no.
No, but, but Sam and in the, in the footnote, we should put a draft and date. Because this thing has happened second. Sam, you remember we passed a wrong ordinance for Avalon? And we realized after the council meeting, uh, council meeting and we had to go back and redo that. So the same thing happened. So way, way, way back. Uh, I think before David was here. So, uh, we should just put a, in the footnote, we should put version number.
Yes, uh, when it was sent over and had a, a header on.
Bracket, yeah, but this has an A, B, and C. Uh, but then there's another, so it's C B, uh, oh, it's E B.
Yeah, it's a continuation. It's, it's sort of.
It's still confusing.
The number bracket they can see there are within.
Yeah.
The, Michael, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, got it.
Okay. I guess when you remove all the red and you can just. No, no, no. The, the, uh. The crux of my interjection was to like just check like your letter, outline and numbering and whatever.
Yeah.
I know because of the correction, it's a red line version, it's, you know, but and it'll page numbers. So, um, we need page numbers.
When we sent it over, it had page numbers.
Okay.
So.
Okay, um.
I'll start for the night, guys.
Any, anybody have any issue with, um?
And just to refresh everybody's memory on this, this is, uh, ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash oh three, two thousand twenty-five dash oh four. We had a meeting about this about a month, a month and a half ago, uh, where we went over these drafts, um. Updating our checklist order requirements. The reason that we're doing this is, you know, a couple of reasons why. One, it has been updated for several years. Um, so it's just need, uh, cleaning up, removing redundancies, cleaning up the language. Uh, the second thing is we're getting more applications and we want to make sure that we have sufficient information so that you, the board, uh, the public as well as the applicant knows exactly what they need to see for an application or if they think that they don't need to provide it, have good reasons for not providing it. Uh, so this is really cleanup work and it's also, uh, just checking and making sure that we're having the adequate information provided before that you guys need to make a decision. Um, so we had that meeting about a month or two ago. We discussed potential changes to the ordinance, we incorporated those. And then when you see before you tonight, uh, are those revised ordinances? The, uh, point of this meeting is to see if these ordinances are not inconsistent with our master plan as well as to all any recommendations. Uh, recommendation number one would be numbering, um, of pages. Uh, and that's essentially our task for tonight.
Also, keep in mind, it's not on the checklist. We can't ask the applicant to provide it. So we can ask, but there's no legal thing to get around that because we want to make sure everything's on the checklist. Especially here, we have gotten a hundred and five and so forth.
I, I, wait a minute, second. So if we leave, inadvertently leave something off and maybe it's significant, they, they're not required to do it?
We can ask.
Yeah, not, 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 not for completeness purposes, but if not for completeness purposes, that's absolutely correct. During the hearing though, there's some information that we need, whether it's on the checklist or not, I think we have the right to request it of them.
Okay, that's something we need to witness to change.
Yeah, that's what he did.
Okay.
And now I also met Paul, the traffic engineer, update specifically what he's going to improve in the checklist. So we had typically when apps will submit something, we just say we have seen the traffic study. There were the T R C meeting, Paul said, well, could you do this and that and use this information, whatever? Now it's in the checklist. So when it's prepared at T R C, it has all the information possible.
If, if something is not on the checklist and then the applicant wants to do something and we have the right to then say, well, you need to provide us X, Y, and Z in order for us to give you that, right? We can do that.
Right, we would still be competing.
Right, exactly.
But if during, like what Michael's saying, during deliberations, an issue comes up.
You mean they say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do our next pile of C study. It's not part of the checklist, but where it feels uncomfortable before we do it, I think the applicant will do it. But that's, it's not.
But it's not a checklist item.
So, so it's something may not be a checklist item, but during deliberations and presentation of the application, the planning board could then say, well, we really need this. Well, I don't know what this is, but we really need this. And you're not willing to do it, then we may not prove you. And we could do that. It's our right to, okay.
Which, yeah, it can always backfire. It'd be easier, it's sort of rational next, what you're requesting versus the app.
Yeah, if it's a reasonable request, the applicant, applicant always agrees to do it. I mean, right?
Yeah.
But they can always turn around and say it wasn't on your checklist in the first place.
They could do that.
They could, they could challenge it.
And we could, during, you want this, this, and this. Well, if you're gonna do that, then we want you to do, you know, make the trees the upper twelve feet high instead, you know, and they could say no, and then we can, we can not approve it. And then they can challenge us just because we want the trees, we need.
But, but think back, I, I actually can't think of an application in which during the course of the presentation and deliberations, we said, you know, we need this information where, where the applicant said, oh, it wasn't on the checklist. We're not gonna provide it. I, I don't, I don't think it's there for me. Oh, did you?
The checklist needs to be updated.
Yeah, we should have it. It's completely.
I just have a few questions. I'm sorry, I was not at the meeting where you discussed the checklist. I didn't, but I'm just looking at one thing. The void jurisdiction shall not be governed by any statutory time with regards to the concept plan. That means a guy can come in with concept plans and to me, like, change for nine months, a year, and get no feedback or whatever.
Theoretically.
I mean, there should be something at least in six months, give them some back or otherwise, why, why would anybody bother to come in for a concept?
Well, people come for concept plans all the time. Um. Technically, that's something that gets reviewed by the T R C, the time you committee. Uh, the reason we didn't put that in is because, um, pursuant to municipal land use law, there really is no block associated with concept land. Um, but people submit concept plans, uh, the T R C typically reviews those. Uh, sometimes the concept plans get brought to the board here, uh, but statutorily, there's no time clock. So.
Right.
It's really not an application, I guess.
You know, it just, you know, if I were an applicant, they looked at them like, why would they get them up here for?
Well, they can always withdraw and then submit a regular.
Right.
Final cycle and application or self-division or whatever.
Um, I have another question. Uh, one thing I think is important in terms of the review. Um, when we talk. Um, when we're talking about the landscape plan. Uh, you have six D, uh, you cross out superimposed and aerial code of on the cores. I think that's helpful for seeing the um, aerial photo in context with the uh. With the site plan, so you become more familiar with it, because the applicant is talking about, well, in the Northeast, we have some trees over here, and you've got houses over here, and this is a sufficient buffer. Well, you're taking his word, fine, but it would be helpful to see that, I think that should be considered.
Uh, you, you're not wrong, the reason that we took that out is because it's replicated somewhere else, so there is another checklist item that required.
That's fine. Um. And under the uh. Traffic impact study, state of the traffic count that I'm not over the three years, if you use for base condition analysis. So is this industry-wide standard?
That would be an industry-wide standard, yeah, so we had consulted with Quasi on that one, or traffic, yeah. Uh, we, yeah, anything that is dealing with traffic, we consulted with Quasi. Uh, the landscape requirements, obviously, we consulted with Dan Friar, and leaving, and then with Ed Snikus from our office. Um, and then we also consulted with our uh, acoustical expert as well regarding that language, so.
In terms of landscaping again, we have, uh, we crossed out in the last year, those sections we were wearing, to show uh, the effectiveness of landscape buffers. Is that anyplace else in the ordinance? Because I think a couple of times, we do ask for sections.
Yeah.
Through uh, through burn, so we see, you know.
We do, yes, there, there's another section where we require them to show the location, form height, and with other landscape architectural materials, such as burns, fences, walls, site furniture. Bridges and walks, and when required, a section to show the effectiveness of landscape buffers, yeah, so there's a lot of uh, language that was duplicated in it, so.
And also, do we have a landscape management, the maintenance schedule, and then the other part of the?
We do, uh, that is located.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right, that's the only ones I had on. Twenty-four five, okay, three.
Want to see if I go to the first, if they have any questions, if they have any more.
I think so, it kind of makes sense.
I'm just curious if you have anything related to, say, an applicant, it's bringing in a uh. Cellular. Tower. Because what leaves my ass at is, you know, we have a. Contractor that comes in, is one of our professionals that uh, gives a opinion as to whether the applicant is correct on. Various uh, R F stuff.
When we had a rush, the operations officer, so for example, happy to explain, um, consulting used to.
Okay, because I know that we've had A T and T here, and some other company here in the past.
Then also the laws changed a few years ago, so if someone wants to switch out antenna or. Or equipment in that box, as long as it doesn't exceed what the area is for being, then it's just a uh, proven application.
But if, if there is a new application for, say, somebody wants to build a new tower or something like that. Uh, we do have supplemental regulations outside of the checklist ordinance, feeling, dealing specifically with wireless communication facilities. And it goes through what you need to provide, the little impact, the needs analysis, uh, alternative site analysis, all those things.
Right, interesting. You know, since it's not here.
Yeah.
I'm asking, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, they're not, they're not fun applications to sit through.
You know, I also understand that the uh, S C C has jurisdiction as opposed to a local planning board.
It's their top applications to do without a local level, so.
Some knowledge, no, probably, we would forget other applications.
Oh.
Well, well, the zoning board did have uh, P S E N G with the monopoles, you know. Oh, I remember that. The trellis towers with the monopoles, that was a zoning application. That was a, that was also, a zoning application review. Lot of block and lot numbers on that one. Right.
Those, those uh, things.
And we were just one township along the whole string of central New Jersey to review it.
Yeah.
That was the zoning, it was zoning because of the height. Yeah, conditional use variance, yeah.
Because I, because I remember we had one on Rabbit Hill Road, and um, and we also had one on South, no, South Mallway. Those were. Um, so.
One in the park.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was, so we're three of them.
Well, we have restrictions on cell phone towers, they can only put on existing structures, right?
That's why it's going to come. Not even, that's what. That's what the guy on Rabbit Hill Road.
Yeah.
Did anyway.
Well, yeah, but there was already structures that. Okay, um, any other changes or comments regarding ordinance twenty-two thousand twenty-five dash three?
Yeah, I don't. I think it's a good idea of owning each one, each ordinance.
So is it, we're approving the ordinance, or we?
Yeah.
Approving to pass it on to the.
Yeah.
Council for.
Yeah, we're rec, we're recommend.
Recommend that you recommend.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion to uh. Passing it back to.
Finding substantially consistent with the master plan.
Of page numbers and uh, bringing it out.
And that includes the forms to the master plan.
Yeah, and the forms of management, yeah, make sure.
Okay, uh, motion by Jerika, second by Anis, um, is Paul the role for this?
Mister Patel?
Yes.
Mister Lavaro?
Yes.
Mister Shactel?
Yes.
Mister Panko?
Yes.
Mister Babe?
Yes.
Miss Barry?
Yes.
Mayor Marten?
Yes.
Page Chairman Oberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carter?
Yes. When is the county council, thank you. Next up is, we have subdivision checklist on the two thousand twenty-five dash four four.
So this is very much like the site plan ordinance checklist, but dealing with subdivision specifically. Again, for the same reason we discussed, our old checklist is a little out of date. Uh, we want to make sure that we're providing enough information for the board, the public, and also applicants too, uh, that they know what they need to submit, how they need to submit it. And that everybody's working on the same page, so we went through, updated the uh. Checklist ordinance in conjunction with your engineer, landscape architects, traffic consultant, and acoustical consultant as well. And again. My apologies for no page numbers.
I wish I could refer to each.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, changes?
Just uh, curious, I, I see here, like, the proposed names of all streets in the subdivision. Will be approved by township engineer. Or nation with uh, police fire emergency services in the post office. Um, what about uh, street numbers, or does, is that any? That's part of the street names and, okay, but it doesn't specifically say numbers, but this other section, what?
Number ten.
Oh, okay, oh, number ten?
Oh, that's a, you're blocking lot, yeah.
I thought that had to do with tax lots.
Uh, yeah, number ten is uh, tax lots, there's another section of the provision or ordinance that deals with um. Like, address number.
Okay, there is, okay, just curious.
The block and lot number is just the tax map, it's not the.
Exactly, yeah, that would be like block one oh one oh one, lot seven, which I'm assuming might be a block in.
Okay, um, any larger changes to uh, twenty-two, twenty-five oh four? We're, we're in, um, non, like, in a motion to recommend disorderments with page numbers. Then uh, be voted to cancel.
Oh, like.
Most of my hours.
Oh, so good.
Second, Anis. Well, obviously, more efficient.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
That sound?
Yes.
Mister Panko?
Yes.
Mister Babe?
Yes.
Miss Barry?
Yes.
And Marten?
Yes.
Page Chairman Oberman?
Yes.
Very much.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, next up, um, draft land use ordinance, R P dash oh nine, this is ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash oh six.
Yes, good evening, everybody, not just. Backing to see that the burden I did send, page numbers, um, good evening, everybody, again, Dave Novak. With Burgess Associates, these are two pairs of ordinances that are sent, carbon copies of one another. Um, looking to accomplish the same thing. Uh, this is an ordinance to supplement both our uh, ecosystem online, so our online ordinance, as well as our Princeton Junction redevelopment plan. To uh, amend the zoning of the R P nine district. Uh, this is essentially located junction area, uh, where the former bus depot was located. Um, we had a meeting about, was it last month or so? Well, we kind of set the stage for this, we had adopted amends to our master plan document, as well as our Princeton Junction redevelopment plan. Uh, highlighting the change of this, which is essentially changing the zoning and the purpose of this district to. Uh, accommodate not only public park uses and mechanisms intended to screen the uh, uh, power station next door. But also allowing for off-street parking, uh, training facilities for public transportation, monument signage, and uh, street furnishings as well. The idea behind this ordinance is to work in consultation with the West Windsor Parking Authority, add some supplemental parking there should it ever be needed. And also create a space where um, you know, should there be a uh, small, you know, opportunity on weekends to have. Uh, some sort of small community that there, uh, food trucks, for example. So, hey, this ordinance is setting the stage to take this currently underutilized site. Um, allow for some additional parking there, should there be a need for overflow parking at the train station, as well as coming up with kind of a uh, a flex space as well. What this ordinance does, as I mentioned, is it meant, uh, amends both land use section part five, which is the Princeton Junction redevelopment plan regulations. As well as just the regular land use code as well. Um, the. Purpose of tonight's here, is to see if these ordinances are not inconsistent with our master plan. And again, we just adopted an ordinance, I'm sorry, master plan amendment, uh, a few weeks ago. Which basically set the stage for this and um, reiterated a lot of these draft standards as well. Uh, the board is also welcome to offer any type of recommendations, it's. We've already received a few recommendations from um. Kevin McManaman, who is our, uh, the statutory redevelopment attorney. Um, some of these are fairly small, so for example, on page one. Subsection A one, he recommended adding the word space after event on the third to last line, so an event space. Uh, top of page four, section C, the last line says. Assessment said, ex, 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 that should be, so that's a typo on my end. And he also notes in the same section, both for developers of lots one and two, to enter into a lease agreement with the township of West Windsor. Prior to development taking place, lease for what, we may want to specify there, that would be a lease agreement, uh, essentially to utilize a site for parking, so we can specify that in the ordinance as well.
I think it's here, if you don't remember the discussion regarding parking, right? So in the side, it's these staffs, let's say food vendors or other things, I think during the week, it's going to be used for maybe train parking. Does it even have to, does it even have to have that component, and the reason why I say that is if you go through, you know, the lots during the week. Is that a lot of empty spots? Like, a lot of people are not commuting anymore, so maybe it doesn't even have to be used for train parking, but. Maybe temporary, short-term parking, a lot of people are going to be using the facilities on that site. As opposed to during the week, train parking, it's just a thought, you know, I don't, you know, that's. I'm not advocating so, so much for it, it's just that I was thinking, like, there's so many spots available.
Um, so almost talking about overflow parking for the rest of the board over there, for shopping, or?
Um, for, for shopping, yeah, oh, so not, so not the train, not park, get there eight o'clock in the morning and park all day. But go there and walk around in, in the shops, that, that, I mean, that's what I would expect, so two-hour limit or one-hour limit or something to that effect. You know, I, I, I just, I want people going there because it's, you know, convenient, close to the house, and it's, is it going to be free, I guess, right?
Well, actually, the rule goes here, the county's according, your town has a lease agreement, you, we're talking about, we're using that country policy, we give annual, and you can explain what the law can only play in works.
Okay, fine.
Andy Lupo, forty-seven San Marco Street, uh, chairman of the West Windsor Parking Authority. Andy, I'm, I'm going to swear you in, if you raise your right hand, do you swear, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, be the truth? I do. So, or could you please say your full name and swear your last name? Andy Lupo, L U P O, forty-seven San Marco Street, Princeton Junction, and I'm the chairman of the West Windsor Parking Authority. So our intention here was to, uh, first thing as a long-term resident, was to try to figure out how to clean up that site. And in the parking board, we, we thought this could be an opportunity to remove the bus garage, remove the tank that's buried there. It's contaminated soil, we would cap it, much like you all know we did with Upper Vaughan, and we had success doing that. Uh, we thought this would be an opportunity to put parking in, and to Michael's point, there are some empty spots right now, we, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we're very busy. Monday, Fridays, with the remote working, it's not as busy. We're also believing that with the additional housing that's going up by the Transit Village and other developments in town, there may be more of a push for spaces again. So we wanted to get out in front of that, and we thought this would be a good way of also providing, especially on weekends, you talked about food trucks, different types of community events that. Uh, we could think of, we did some food trucks in uh, the, where the farmer's market is a few years ago, we'd like to encourage that again. And on weekends, we would thought that would be free parking for residents or anyone to come by, visit the neighborhood, walk around as downtown is further developed. During the week, we do envision having permit parking or daily parking there, but it would really be more of an overflow. People would prefer to park in the Wallace permit lot or the Wallace daily lot because it's closer. Right now, we have a, an agreement with Princeton, who's using Upper Vaughan for their construction workers. So we do have some needs for people on this side of the track to gain additional spaces. So we thought this would sol, solve a few issues, clean up the unsightly place that we've had for a long time. Utilize it, repurpose it, uh, which would be better for the community, and also give us the opportunity to have more parking available as needed. In the meantime, as, uh, as an event presents itself, we would open that up to the public, uh, we've been working very closely with the township. Uh, on getting this to this point, we still have a few hurdles to get through, uh, but we think this is in the, in our best interest as a parking authority, to put more spaces, to have them readily available.
Question, so let's say there was an event, would, would then like signs, maybe temporary signs go up to say, uh, no train, no transit parking today, you know, could go in the van or something?
Yeah, so we have enforcement people on site as well, and uh, they patrol the lots daily right now, including weekends. The eventual, as of today, we envision those would be taking place on weekends. Weekends, it's really less busy in this, in the lots, people go in for plays or for dinners, uh, but not, there's, that's why we offer free parking in Wallace permit. Right now for West Windsor residents, and we've extended those hours to be Friday night to early Monday morning, like, one o'clock in the morning. So people can use it on the weekend and not worry about it. We would not anticipate any train-related parkers in that lot on a weekend. They'll have pick of their spots in Wallace.
But don't you have issue on the people waiting for the in cars to receive their commuters and sometime in years.
It's.
Overflow there. So don't have to use this one for that overflow?
We've talked, talked about that too, just like airport parking where they have the cell phone lot.
Yes, yes.
We've, we thought that would be a good idea. Our West Windsor residents are not happy about waiting anywhere other than right where they want to wait. Uh, and unless we have a police officer, because our enforcement officers cannot engage with a moving vehicle, we can only deal with ticketing someone who's parked. Someone who's waiting is not considered parked. So we can't, we can try to shoo them away, but we have no real enforcement. But the thought was to say, wait.
I was waiting on Philadelphia Airport. I got the ticket.
No, but it's, it's something we've been thinking about trying to, because we know the circle is a problem, and the police has been gracious enough to come by when they can, but realistically, it's an everyday thing during rush hour. If, there's just not a lot of places. We even put waiting spots in Wallace daily, in Wallace permit. But that's a little bit of a walk. So, you know, it's good for you, but it's not good for me. I need to pick them up right here. And that's why you'll see people, they won't even pull to the side. They'll just stop and they'll wait right there. And as much as we can, we move them, but that's not going to go.
They want to walk only on treadmill, not on.
No.
And planning on demolishing the wall and remediate everything on that. How many parking spaces are being sprayed for being?
Unfortunately, we'll only get about thirty-five spaces, uh, because Amtrak has a, an access right, because they have a training facility behind uh, our bus garage there. Um, but we've worked something out with them where what they're currently using as of an access point, they'll have a, another route in, but it won't take as much space. So they've agreed to that. So that's helpful for us. But we'll only capture somewhere in the thirties, uh, but it will clearly clean the area up. And we also have a, the idea of a pocket park with a couple of tables, may, maybe a future pavilion that if someone wants to go and grab a sub, they can come sit out there by the park. Uh, so that's the plan right now. Uh, we still have a couple of things to get through. We've, you know, we we're going through the venue. Once this gets done, then we're going to be going through the process to RFP it out for the demolition of the building, the removal of the tank, and the soil remediation. That's first step. Second step would be the construction.
And TRC.
And a lot of the comments that the board has offered, we've communicated through to them through those TRC meetings. So questions regarding circulation, queuing, landscaping of the nearby facility, those have all been brought up, so. You're.
I was wondering. Did you put that in the question?
It's already in there as one of the purposes of the district, uh, or one of the permitted uses of the district. Um. Yeah, that, yeah, that's actually remains as one of the principal committed uses there. Um, and we did share those comments as well as like some of the photographs you provided as well. Yep.
Yeah, we're trying to work with Amtrak on the screening because it's their fence, and the fence, the fence is in rough shape. So we've offered to help repair that fence, but it's Amtrak. That's not, Jersey Transit is a, is an animal. Amtrak is nationwide, but they've been receptive right now. It's just a matter of getting someone to sign off. Exactly, right. And to us, it's a reasonable fee to clean it up, because it's a site that people see every day. And we go, but we can't do anything about the high wires, but just looking at it, you're like, no, this shouldn't be how the opening of West Windsor appears to people. We're doing a nice job downtown. We did a nice job with the PNC, even though people still want to lick it. They did a nice job with PNC Bank there. We'd like to see this corner cleaned up as well.
After, after it's built, if it's determined that no one's using any of the parking or very little bit of it, well, could it maybe get repurposed, you think?
Well, we will have a lease agreement with the township. It's like with Upper Vaughan, we don't, Parking Authority does not own that. We own Wallace permit, we own Lower Vaughan. Uh, we will work with the township to see what other venues could be utilizing the space. If, if it's empty, first, if it's empty spaces, that will still look better than what's there. Uh, but we're open, it's, you know, we're part of the community, so we're open with anything we can do to improve it. Yeah.
Amtrak. Can you ask me what they can, who will clean up with their own property?
Oh, my God. It's, it's, it's a challenge. Um, we've had some, I've been doing this for a couple of decades, and in the last six, seven months, we've actually had more progress with them than we've had in fifteen years. Back, back when we used to have the clock or service, it was much better. Communication. Now it's, there's some people there that we have names, they're responsive, so it steps in the right direction.
He's been promising me for three months now.
Yeah, the Parking Authority made the connection with that extension.
Yeah.
But right now.
Yeah, thanks to Parking Authority, actually. They were, they were doing the parking lot there, and they made the connection. There was a little gap, maybe two-inch gap between one drive and the parking lot. So as a part of their parking lot project, they agreed to make the connection. So as soon as they remove the barrier, you can start drive-through. I mean, I drove through before they put the barriers, but as soon as the barriers are lifted, we can drive through.
We got to get through the potential strike first. May sixteenth. That will be a nightmare. There's Jersey Transit engineers that they're going to, they're going to go on, they're right now looking to go on strike. And there's a big gap. So this could be a, a big problem for any commuters.
If they, if they use that. Jersey Transit. Like buses for train stations?
Yes, so they, they will have numerous buses at Hamilton because they feel they have a better queuing uh, area for the buses. We're working with them to try to have some buses here as well, uh, but they recognize that a bus in our area, once it leaves the station, has a long way to go to get on a highway. Where in Hamilton, they can get on a highway very quickly. So they prefer to use Hamilton for that. We we're, we're working with them right now on this. But this will be a problem for commuters, because we don't, we're not optimistic right now based on everything.
This, this Friday, right?
The sixteenth.
Okay.
Sixteen, sixteen, that, I think it's twelve oh one. So a, a, and they've described it, if, if you're on a train at twelve oh one, they'll tell you the next stop is the last stop. So don't work late that day. No.
So don't go on the train on the sixteenth.
Yeah, I would avoid it. I would, I would do that remote work from home.
Are, are you better know how to ride?
Driving.
Yeah.
Any other questions or?
What's, what did you say about Princeton venting one drive?
No, so Princeton, Upper Vaughan, we have an agreement with Princeton. They needed places for their construction. People, construction vehicles, so the workers, so the workers parking our lot, Princeton buses them away.
Buses that you see all over.
And it's an easy one for us because it pretty much happened around the COVID time. We were struggling because people weren't going in. Princeton needed spaces. We worked it out with them. Well, we were able to, uh, lease them uh, spaces for, you know, a time period. And that's, that's been very good for all of us right now. And it hasn't, it, it hasn't hindered, uh, hindered our ability to have people park. So we're still, Lower Vaughan still has some room, uh, but we, and Wallace permit is also using some Wallace daily people right now too. We have signs to let people know where they can park and, you know, what the cost. So we charge a premium on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays because uh, more people are going in those days.
Because I know Princeton University had the contractors parking when they're now late campus. Right for, but now.
Yeah.
Doing construction when they're late.
They need the space. Yeah. Yes. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other, any, anything else on twenty five, twenty five dash six? I want to take a motion to recommend the, uh, ordinance two thousand twenty five dash six that passed on back to council.
So. Second.
They moved by George.
And with the consistency with the master plan.
Yeah. Please put that in. I forget to say. Thank you. Um, this will roll.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Levaro.
Yes.
Mr. Shecktow.
Yes.
Mr. Pankov.
Yes.
Mr. Bae.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mayor Marte.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Oberman.
Yes.
Chairman Carr.
Yeah. Thank you. Next up, draft Princeton Junction Redevelopment Plan ordinance RP dash nine, ordinance two thousand twenty five dash oh seven.
This is essentially the same shoe I just gave last time. This is an ordinance to supplement the RP nine district to allow parking there as well as training facilities, monument signage, street furnishing. Uh, again, the idea is to enable a way to clean up the site, make it a little bit more productive for overflow parking as well as potentially having events. Um, so very much similar to the last one, same requirements, same regulations. Only difference between the two are where they are located online in our E-coded system.
I'm sorry, the only difference?
Is where they're located in our E-code system online.
Okay, one is, um, the redevelopment plan and one is.
Yeah, one amends the redevelopment plan. Exactly. So the one that ends the redevelopment plan, that'll be posted on the redevelopment section of the website. The other one amends our E-code system, uh, and that will be in the Princeton Junction regulations. Yeah, it's a good system that you guys have because oftentimes we'll prepare a redevelopment plan. It'll almost stand independent of how people codify it online. So that when people go to submit an application, they might not realize there's a redevelopment plan there sometimes. So it's a good system that you have to duplicate it. I know it seems like a lot, but it works out.
So there's, there's no, it's similar to the previous one.
No text change.
No text change. I was going to move in to, um, recommend moving this back to council with.
I'll second.
Then it's consistent with our master plan. I'll move by Simon, second by Alan. Uh, this is going to roll.
Yeah, whatever it was.
Yeah, they were.
Mr. Patel. Mr. Levaro.
Yes.
But tell race candy said yes.
Still the bar, yes. Mr. Shecktow.
Yes.
Mr. Pankov.
Yes.
Mr. Bae.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mayor Marte.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Oberman.
Yes.
Chairman Carr.
Yes. A motion. With my answer, second by Alan, will they say hi?
Hi. Hi.
Um, Danny Jaren.
Sam, when is the, Sam, when is the next meeting?
Can you go over May, June, calendar first?
Very quick, um, I already. Or acquire a group. That's it. And then June four, the council. And then June eighteen is the meeting.
But June twenty six, you, you are asking uh, excuse me, twenty sixth is still there? You asked in your email, a special meeting on June twenty sixth.
So. And I have to say.
Okay.
Here's, here's the meeting. Uh, we're a doctor, housing on the parishioner plant. Oh, parishioner nation. Oh, that's great. But, um, that will draw a lot of people, I imagine. And not. It's probably not the third round. There's.
And Sam.
Any word of adoption?
Um. Counsel.
Was it? And able, uh, it's. It was. Isn't, isn't, isn't there something going on? Federal government to the state should be already on shore, housing down.
Uh, it's not really.
How much? Yeah, it's challenging that if you, if you challenge over and over. Yeah, we're having a, okay, helpful conversation.